Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:35 PM. We will call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present here with us today. And at this time, I'll ask for everybody to please rise as Commissioner Lopez leads us in our invocation.
Let's pause for a moment of reflection as we gather here today to undertake the important work before us. We humbly ask for guidance and wisdom as we deliberate on the matters concerning the well-being and progress of our beloved city and its people. May our decisions be rooted in fairness, integrity, and a genuine desire to serve the best interests of all residents of Harlingen. Grant us the strength to engage in respectful dialogue, to listen with open hearts and minds to diverse perspectives, and to collaborate effectively for the common good. May we be mindful of the trust placed in us and strive to act with diligence and foresight. We pray for the safety and prosperity of our community, for the strength of our families, and for the continued growth and vibrancy of Harlingen. May our work today contribute to a broader future for all who call this city home. Amen.
Quid pro quo allegiance?
Quid pro quo allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a project which expands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None.
No.
None.
None.
Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Items three A, Mayor's Announcements. Mayor, do you have something to announce?
I don't have any announcements.
Moving on to item three B, City Manager's Announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have something to announce?
Yes. We need to start planning for our town halls that we had agreed to do. Staff has placed a copy of the ordinance in your dais. The only thing that's required that we'll need to consider is that we have to give 30 days notice on our website and all social media. So whatever date you pick has to be 30 days from today, minimum. And then we have to look for a location that's within your district as the town halls have to be held in the district.
So do we let you know?
Yes.
Like when we did?
Yes, let me know, and then I'll coordinate with staff to get it ready. I'll take the first one.
Could we put it on the agenda for next meeting for everybody to identify the date so that way it's set? Because I think that was part of the initial ordinances for us to adopt a calendar so that way it's out there. And then each of the commissioners can have their date, and then we can maybe pull the commission on a comprehensive town hall meeting. That way, it's out there.
I'll take mine in June. Any available day in June?
I'll take mine in May. Oops, sorry. May 22nd looks good.
May 22nd?
Yeah.
And any date that's available with the staff for me in June.
Did you want to have yours here? This is in your district?
Yeah.
This is fine? Okay. Commissioner, you said June for you?
Yes, whatever day. I'm off.
And they have to be after five?
One a month or?
It doesn't, the ordinance doesn't say it has to be once a month.
I think that we do need to do it before September. So if we could, if it's once a month until September, then that's fine. But we just need to complete it by this year.
You took June.
June, yeah.
July. It is the next month.
Go ahead. To me, it doesn't matter. June, July, it's all good with me.
August. So you'll be August, and if you want September, you can take September. And then we just pick a date.
The mayor has to have one, too.
No, we'll do a town hall with everyone. And so that can be in whichever month is good with everybody.
August was Commissioner Morales?
You know what? Make mine in July.
July, too?
Here he has July. Oh, now you, okay. It's like May, June, July, so you do August and then September.
Okay.
September was Mesmaw. Okay.
August is Morales.
Okay.
September, Mike. And then we can, depending on the commission's availability.
Then you can just pick whenever you want to have the, I guess we can, whenever you decide to have the one with everyone, we can probably do it here? We've got plenty of parking in the location here. Okay, awesome. Just let me know when the mayor wants me to post it.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted, while we're on this topic, is the neighborhood walks. I know that District One has it complete, District Two, and District Five.
I'm doing mine, not this weekend, but the following.
Okay.
But that's not your first one, though, right?
Yes.
Oh, it is your first one?
Daniel hogged it up.
I took three already.
Yes.
Okay, you can't have anymore.
Well, the idea was that everyone, so then maybe in the next meeting to identify, I think Mike's going to need some time.
Yeah. I'm not walking around any time.
Just because, yes, yes, understood. You know, once he recovers, he can circle back. But to identify, do you know when you want to do yours, Commissioner?
We can shoot for June.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, we'll come back and we'll give you the dates next meeting.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, sir. Moving on to item three C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
Just want to wish everybody Happy Easter, and if you're on the road, be safe.
Happy Easter.
A blessed Pasca.
I echo what they just said. Have a safe Easter weekend. Thank you.
I want to say Happy Easter as well, and I just want to congratulate the Harlingen South Lady Hawks for softball team for clinching the district second year in a row. And hopefully they can make it, hopefully, well, they win, they make it to state again.
All right, okay. Item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. Item four A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission.
She's pretty.
Tonight, AJ with the Harlingen Animal Shelter has brought Avocado. It's a male lab mix about two years old. He is up for adoption at the animal shelter. He's ready, willing, and waiting for his forever family. He gets along with other dogs and cats. So anybody who's interested in possibly fostering or adopting Avocado is welcome to go by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski or give them a call at 216-5250. And then we want to also remind everybody that we will be doing a vaccine clinic on April 26th, and we will be having pre-registration next week. Again, if there are any questions, they're welcome to call the Harlingen Animal Shelter.
Awesome.
This is Avocado.
Avocado is adorable. AJ, I know I saw you at Market Days, and will you, you're doing Sundown? I'm not sure.
I'm not. It'll be the other adoption.
But y'all will be there?
Yeah, we will be there.
Okay, fantastic. And I know you had, when I was there, there were fostering a little pup. And so are there going to be adoptions or fosters on Saturday?
There's going to be both. Both adoptions and fostering.
Wonderful. So for those that don't know, Sundown is when, Commissioners?
Third Saturday of the month.
In the evening? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
That was perfect.
All right.
Next, we have item four B, Mayor's Business of the Month, Desiree Spa and Massage.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Our first award is going to be the Mayor's Business of the Month Award, which is an initiative that's been taking place now since September of 2023. So before we invite the owner to come up and say a few words, we've prepared a video So Desiree Spa and Massage is a day spa dedicated to wellness, personalized care, relaxation, and customized services. So we offer a range of massage therapy, body wraps, body scrubs, specialized facials, also specialized massages as well, therapeutic healing. I love all the services. If you can get me here for a couple of hours, I will schedule facial, massage, pedicure, manicure. You really do feel like a new person when you walk out.
Hello, I'm Michael Boskis. I am the manager here at Desiree Spa and Massage. Why don't you all come and join me on a journey here at Desiree Spa? So what we're going to start off with, folks, is going to be our lobby area. This will be our main lobby where you come in and relax, and then you'll just follow this way. So up here in our front part, we have about five different rooms that offer massage therapy, our facial services, and our waxing services to go along with that, too, as well. And back here is where we have our newest additions here at the spa, which we have our salt room treatment back here, folks, that provides so much wellness and benefits for us to open up our respiratory issues and making us feel so much better, too, as well. I'll go ahead and open that door and give you a glimpse on the inside.
We are located at 1921 East Harrison Avenue here in Harlingen, Texas. We thank all of our customers, and we thank all of our clients and all of my staff for just doing an exceptional job. We all work together so well, and it definitely is worth it, and we are going to continue to pour that out, pour out all the love, all the healing, all the peace for people to feel and take into their daily lives. Ms. Desiree, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I did a little more than a few words. I'm sorry. Thank you. What an incredible honor it is to stand before you today as Desiree Spa has been selected as the Business of the Month. I am truly humbled and filled with gratitude. First and foremost, I want to thank God and Jesus Christ with His grace, strength, and guidance. None of this would be possible. He has set the foundation for every step in this journey. To my amazing parents for always believing in me and for the values you instilled and continue to guide me both in life and business. To my loving husband, thank you for your endless support, love, partnership. And to my brother, sister-in-law, and my beautiful nieces, thank you for being a constant source of encouragement, for always being there to help in any way you can. To my beautiful daughters, thank you for being so amazing, loving, supportive, and patient. You are both my greatest blessings and inspiration, and I'm so proud to be your mom. To my incredible staff, you are the heart of Desiree Spa. You are the passion, dedication, and your passion, dedication, and care are what makes this business so special. This recognition belongs to each of you just as much as me. To our amazing clients and customers, thank you for blessing us every single day with your loyalty and love. Your support means the world to us and keeps our purpose alive. To Mayor Norma Sepulveda, thank you for your incredible leadership and for being such an amazing inspiration and blessing to our community. Your heart and vision continue to uplift and empower us all. And to the entire City Council, thank you for supporting small businesses and helping to create an environment where we can thrive and serve with a purpose. And I thank you, to all of you here. God bless each and every one of you, and I accept this recognition with deep gratitude and joy, and thank you all, and may God continue to bless this beautiful city and each and every one of you. Thank you.
Well, don't go anywhere, Desiree. We just, I want to tell you how incredible you are. I just, you know, even listening to your video, you have such a soothing voice.
Thank you so much.
And walking into Desiree's is a place in Harlingen where you can truly walk in and forget about everything else that's going on. I can say that from personal experience. And the expansion that, and I know, you know, from family working together to make it happen, it's truly the American dream, and I know this is a family-owned business. We're so blessed to have you here in Harlingen, and I know you help many, many people throughout our community. So we wish you continued success and know that you have a partner in the city of Harlingen. And I'd love to be able to take a photo with the commission, and if your family wants to join as well, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
And here, and three, two, one. Three, two, one, and one more. Three, two, one. Got it.
One last thing I'd like to mention on Desiree's is one of the big reasons that they're so successful is they all went to Harlingen High School South. So.
Go Hawks!
But I will say, they serve the entire city of Harlingen. Birds, all kinds of birds.
Okay, we're all one?
And that is why they are so successful.
I'm rubbing off.
Unlike their businesses on the Cardinal side. Okay, that's one. On to item four C, recognition award to Mr. Christopher Lopez.
Hello, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Delma Chavez, and I am the Special Events and Media Coordinator, and we have a very special recognition award today. The city of Harlingen proudly congratulates Christopher Lopez, a Treasure Hills Elementary student, for his exceptional commitment to reading, demonstrated by the completion of 114 books, the accumulation of 1,200 Accelerated Reader AR points, and the achievement of over 8 million words read to date.
Wow.
Presented on this 16th day of April, 2025. Congratulations, Christopher.
Thank you so much.
I don't think Christopher wants to say a few words because he's had so many words in his life, but we can take a picture together, and that would be fantastic.
Yes, thank you guys. Just thank you guys. I appreciate it. He really truly enjoys reading. This is all him, and he just likes to dive into his adventures. So again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're ready? And three, two, one. You want more? Three, two, one. Hey, guys, you got it. All right. Okay.
preparation and excellence in financing reporting. Robert Ogden.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. We are pleased to announce that in recent months, the city's annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 24, which is the current year that we are in, has received the distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, also known as GFPA. This is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and it reflects a significant achievement by our city. The award is valid for one year and will continue to participate in this program and submitting our budget book for the next budget within the required timeframe. We have received this award for the past 35 years in budget. I would also like to say that we are proud to announce also that we have received the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2023, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Financial Finance Officers Association, which is GFPA. This is the highest recognition of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and it reflects the city's commitment to transparency and full disclosure. We have received this award for 43 years. So I have brought the team from Finance so we could recognize them and present them with the certificates that we have received. So I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the Finance Department for their excellent work and their contribution to maintain the high standard of financial reporting. I would also like to acknowledge the City Manager, the Mayor, and the Commissioners because through their leadership and the guidance, it helps us ensure that the city remains good stewards of the public funds, and it builds trust within the community as it makes thoughtful and data-driven decisions that serve both the current and future residents. And we thank you for your continued leadership, and we look forward to building our successes together. I brought the other.
Thank you, Robert, and of course, to the entire finance team. You do incredible work, and we, you know, this is a testament to you, to the department, knowing that this has been 35 years.
On the budget and 43 in the annual financial report.
That's amazing. That's something that the city of Harlingen can be proud of, that their community and in a strong financial position, and also making sure that we're good stewards of taxpayer money and making sure that we're complying year after year and not just the bare minimum by receiving this excellent recognition. So kudos to all of you. Thank you for all your hard work, and we'd love to take a picture with the commission and with the department.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a few proclamations today, and our first one is honoring Penn Aluminum for 20 years of service to the community, and I will read the proclamation as follows before I invite Ms. Monica Pecanio up here to accept this. Whereas Penn Aluminum is a cornerstone of Harlingen manufacturing community since its establishment on April 1, 2005, providing 59-plus exceptional jobs. And whereas the ownership of Marmon Berkshire Hathaway Company with the steadfast leadership of Mrs. Monica Pecanio, HR manager, and Orlando Martinez manager, Penn Aluminum, has built a reputation for outstanding customer service and quality, commitment to quality. And whereas Penn Aluminum's dedication to excellence and sustainability has contributed to the growth and development in Harlingen, creating jobs, supporting local businesses, and fostering community partnerships. Whereas Penn Aluminum has maintained a strong reputation for quality, safety, and customer service, upholding its highest standards in its operations, and continuing to invest in its workforce and facilities. And whereas the time has come to celebrate 20 years in Harlingen, as this beloved manufacturer and its dedicated team mark their well-deserved anniversary, and whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes the invaluable contributions of Penn Aluminum to grow, to the growth and prosperity of our community and express heartfelt gratitude for their 20 years of service. Now, therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim April 16, 2025, as Penn Aluminum Appreciation Day, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring the owner's leadership and staff for their remarkable dedication and service. Ms. Pecanio, if you'd like to come up?
We'd like to thank the City of Harlingen as well as the Harlingen EDC Office of Jane and Orlando. Both have been really exceptional in helping us out and achieve this achievement with the city as well as the city itself. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. What an incredible milestone. We are glad that you're here in Harlingen and wish you continued success. We'd love to take a picture with you with the proclamation, and we'd invite the EDC to join us as well.
All right, two, three, and three, two, four, and three, two, one. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have proclamation for the National Healthy Homes Month.
Our second proclamation for the night is National Healthy Homes Month, and it reads as follows. Whereas the month of April is recognized as National Healthy Homes Month, and the theme is "Making an Impact: Healthy, Safe, and Resilient Homes," highlights the importance of safe and healthy living environments. And whereas since 2014, the Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Lead Hazard Control in Healthy Homes has led the National Healthy Homes Month campaign to educate the public, policymakers, health and housing professionals, caregivers, and community about key issues affecting home health and safety. And whereas health and safety hazards in the homes such as lead-based paint, radon, mold, pests, allergens, and physical hazards can cause or contribute to a wide range of serious health conditions, including lead poisoning, asthma, cancer, and injuries. Whereas lead poisoning continues to affect thousands of children under the age of six in Texas, posing a significant public health concern. And whereas unintentional injuries within the home impact thousands of Texas residents every year. Whereas improper storage of household chemicals and the dangers of carbon monoxide poisoning are responsible for harming hundreds of Texans annually. And whereas many Texas families and households are unaware that their homes can have serious health hazards. And now, therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, as National Healthy Homes Month, and encourage all Harlingen residents to learn about and take actions toward creating healthier, safer, and more resilient homes. This award goes to Sandy Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Nicole Rios. I'm the Compliance Coordinator for Community Development. I'm honored to be here today on behalf of our Director, Sandy Alvarez, to accept this proclamation in recognition of National Healthy Homes Month. As a brief refresher and highlight, our Healthy Homes program was awarded over $1 million to help make Harlingen homes safer and healthier.
of Housing and Urban Development to implement a variety of community development initiatives that primarily benefit low and moderate income residents, including the elderly and children. And whereas the CDBG program has played a crucial role in the city of Harlingen's ability to support and enhance the quality of life for its residents through investments in sewer, water, street improvements, public facilities, housing programs, and essential public services. And whereas over the past fifty-one years, the CDBG program has helped foster strong partnerships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations in communities across the country. And whereas the week of April twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate, recognize, and show appreciation for the CDGB program and the positive impact it has nationwide. Now therefore I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, here do by proclaim the week of April twenty-first to twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Community Development Block Grant Week in support of its valued program that has made tremendous contribution to the visibility of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. Further, that this community urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program by supporting increased funding for the program in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Three, two, one. One more. Yes, ma'am. Because we're gonna hit you. One more. All righty, moving on. Next up, we have the proclamation for National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Animal Control Association has designated the second full week of April each year as National Animal Control Appreciation Week. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials across the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers and animal services staff for the dedicated service they provide to the citizens as well as to various public safety and public service agencies and departments throughout the nation. And whereas in twenty twenty-four, City of Harlingen Animal Control, Control received four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one calls for service, handled one thousand three hundred and fifty-seven strays, picked up one thousand four hundred and twenty-one animals in traps, and addressed one hundred and eighty-six bite cases. And whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes its animal control officers for the many dedicated, tireless hours of service they perform for the residents of our community and for fulfilling the department's commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Now therefore I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Tech, City of Harlingen, Texas, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week and call upon all residents of Harlingen to join us in expressing their sincere appreciation for the service and dedication of our animal control officers. If we can have Shannon Hargill.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Commission. We're very thankful for our animal control officers. We have four gentlemen who work in our animal control department, who work day in and day out to protect the citizens of Harlingen, the animals of Harlingen, and they do it with the utmost pride and to the best of their absolute ability. And I'm very thankful to be able to work with them each and every day. They work very strongly as a team and willing to learn, willing to do everything within their power to get things addressed as quickly as they can. So I'm just very lucky to be able to work with them and want to say thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, if you can please make your way up here. We are very appreciative of your hard work and your efforts. We know it is not an easy job, but we appreciate you and I know the city of Harlingen appreciates you and thank you, Shannon, for your, for your leadership and all that you gentlemen do for our community. If we can get the commission to take a photo, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, that's ready. And three, two, one, one more. Three, two, one. Okay, that's it. Okay. Yes, ma'am. We're passing on the last one. We're gonna go ahead and pass on the next one, Mayor, so we're gonna move on to item five.
Yes, ma'am.
Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on any, on topics addressed. Mayor, we had a total of four signups, so we'll begin with Ms. Alice Becerra. Ms. Becerra? Alice Becerra?
I don't see her here.
Okay. Okay. Next up, we will have Ms. Elizabeth Garcia.
I don't believe that she was, I think she sent me a text message that she was not able to make it.
Okay. Up next is Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, seven zero six, Nanette Drive. Basically, before I get into it, I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Lopez and, and our city manager. There was an issue going on with the business that the business owner posted online, a concern that they had and reached out to Commissioner Lopez and they were able to address it right away and, you know, it could have been a very precarious, possibly dangerous situation, but it was addressed and so thank you guys for doing that. Another thing I wanna give thanks to Arnold and his staff for the Streets and Lights Department. There was some issues going on there. You know, the AEP, another corporate entity, entity, you know, they think they got it like that, well, they found out they didn't quite have it like that. They were very adamant about addressing some issue with some lights that were going up. It kind of affected me because it was one of my lights that my father had purchased. He paid for the pole and, I apologize, this thing never stops. And, you know, I went ahead and donated it or gave it to the city or whatever the case was. And they were lingering like four months to try to get this light on. But after a couple of phone calls, after I found out exactly who he spoke to, which I happen to know some of those individuals, it was addressed, handled, and we're good to go now. We got sufficient lighting right there and my business in the downtown area, which I think was lacking, along with some other lights that, you know, need, I'm sure will be tackled. It'll come up. I just give you, thank you for, you know, the excellent work you did on that.
Oh, thank you.
And again, there's still some things lingering. You know, we're waiting for, for EDC to review all these grant applications and stuff. Anything and everything is appreciated. I know some people took horrible losses. One of my buildings suffered over thirty-five, whatever, thousand dollars worth of damage. And sad thing is, we have insurance and some, you know, some people do, some people, some people don't. But in, you know, now you gotta battle the insurance companies. I'm doing that with one and they came out, did what they did, of course, claims denied. But that's why they have lawyers. And so my team jumped on it real quick on this one particular instance. And, you know, I still think that if the city can do more based on what I was told from discussing it with other officials, let's use that term, then we should do what we can, you know, to help the citizens as much as we can, always. And remember that the reason you guys were elected was to do the right thing for the right reasons and stuff. This is a time of crisis where, you know, the, the city support is needed and they should do anything and everything that they can to make sure the citizens are taken care of, in my opinion, a hundred and fifty percent. And tied with the buzzer, but I'm good to go. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Next, we have Ms. Connie Reese. Ms. Reese?
I had to write this. I have a brain injury and this is not easy. And if you can give me some extra time, maybe thirty seconds. And I'm not here to blame anybody and I know I'm not here to criticize anybody, it's total facts. I have been blamed by animal control for bringing on food is why dogs chase me on pedal bike or motorcycle and they can't catch them because the dogs go in the alleys and in between houses, they lose them and no one claims to own them. I got a phone call Monday, four eighteen twenty-five from Human Resources, told me would be about food box being delivered. I have been to the grocery store once since February. The call was to tell me the only thing humane society did was house, kept dogs off the street and from multiplying. On seven twenty, seven fifteen twenty-three, I was on a joyride with my, on my scooter with my pup. She loved to bike. At Taylor and A Street, a big black dog got one back tire. I flew off the bike, got serious brain injury, four broken ribs, extended road rash, hospitalized, lost my helmet, my glasses required to drive, and my dog. Two seventeen twenty-five, I was discharged from physical therapy from that accident. On two twenty-four twenty-five, I was returning from Sam's Club with two items. They didn't deliver the day before. Five dogs from, two items, they didn't deliver the day before. Five dogs from A Street and Taylor charged my cycle. I stopped many times, chased them off, returned faster every time. It was the second time that I'd taken that route since seven fifteen twenty-three, which is my street. Between Philmore and Pierce, the accident happened. My motorcycle was towed two twenty-five twenty-five, still don't have it back. On March twenty-ninth, I was pedaling a trike to Walmart for groceries. They didn't deliver the day before. At six fifteen a.m., I seen the dog sleeping on the driveway on Buchanan near B Street. Coming back, at least nine dogs approached me running. I stopped my bike, put the bike between me and them, grabbed my six-foot, ten-pound cable with a lock, and they stayed as a rainbow around me as traffic from both directions slowed to watch and no one stopped. Then three thirty-one twenty-five, animal control was notified. I wasn't the first or second. On April second, I headed to the garage for broom, two feet from my house, literally. My dog screamed. I turned around, the neighbor's dog had her in his mouth. I body slammed the dog with a punch in the ribs and it ran. And groceries is not the only thing I need to leave my home for safely. Now I need a license to carry a concealed gun. It is not just my neighbor. These are the ones that are documented. They're on every street. And now what are you gonna do to keep everyone safe? My eighty-four-year-old neighbor, the guy that brought me here, won't walk because he is attacked by a pit bull at his door. He was my, and there's no pedestrians, no more on the street. And I'm sorry, but it's because of the dogs. They're, they're out of control.
So, Ms. Reese, thank you for coming and sharing this information with us. We welcome you to come at any time in these city commission meetings. I just don't want you to feel that the city commission isn't responding directly to your concerns. We do have rules that govern, that we're not able to, to talk about it since it's not on the agenda, but we do have your information. I'm glad that you were here. I did read this before, saying that you might not be here for the same reasons that you stated. So I know, I believe Commissioner Morales is, you said Buchanan, I don't know, Buchanan?
Is in my district.
Is in your district?
You know what? It's everywhere. I've been riding.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been riding here nineteen years and I haven't seen a pedestrian in two years.
So what we'll do is since we have your contact information, city staff has it and we'll reach out to you so that way we can, we can talk at a time where we can converse.
Okay, I appreciate it and I'm sorry, but I was really nervous and I walked in and seen all these people and said, oh, Lord.
No, ma'am. You're welcome anytime.
God sent me here for the community because I'm gonna have a gun and I'm gonna shoot all of them.
All right, moving on.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes our citizen communication. So we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes, regular meeting, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I make motion to approve subject to one change. Melinda, I'll send it to you.
Okay, sir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there any items to remove from the consent agenda? No?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Move on to item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may be, may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item eight A, city manager's report. You have none to?
Yes, I'd just like to announce that the annual comprehensive financial report was reviewed by the internal audit committee, or the audit committee, rather, and they did have no questions about the report. It's later on, it's item C in the presentation today. That's all I have.
And item eight B, there are none to report, Mayor. So we'll move on to item C, presentation by Costco's and Associates, PC, on the city of Harlingen's annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Alfred Vetta and I am the managing CPA for Costco's and Associates. I'm here this evening to present to you the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to thank you all for choosing us to do your, your external audit. It is a pleasure to, to work with, with the finance team, as you all recognized earlier. You have a very good team and this reflects the, the work that they do.
business or included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Is there any items to remove from the consent agenda? No?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Move on to item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item eight A, city manager's report. You have none.
Yes, I'd just like to announce that the annual comprehensive financial report was reviewed by the internal audit committee, or the audit committee, rather, and they did have no questions about the report. It's later on, it's item C in the presentation today. That's all I have.
And item eight B, there are none to report, Mayor. So we'll move on to item C, presentation by Costco's and Associates, P.C., on the City of Harlingen's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Alfred Vetta, and I am the managing CPA for Costco's and Associates. I'm here this evening to present to you the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended September thirtieth, 2024. I'd like to thank you all for choosing us to do your external audit. It is a pleasure to work with the finance team, as you all recognized earlier. You have a very good team, and this reflects the work that they do, and of course, you all as well oversee. As external auditors, what we do, for those that may not be familiar with an external audit, is we come into an entity, we pull samples, we review the policies and procedures, and then we form an opinion. That opinion is based on the work that is done here, of you all following the policies and procedures, and that is what is provided to the city and goes in the report. If you'll turn with me on the report, or if you have it on your computers, you can scroll down to it, to page thirty-one. Page thirty-one contains the independent auditor's report. The opinion for this year is, again, unmodified. Congratulations. That is a clean opinion, and that is the most favorable opinion that an entity can receive. This opinion is earned based on the work, and it states that the financials are fairly stated and free of material misstatements. Now, we provide reasonable assurance because we do not test one hundred percent of the transactions. We pull samples, but we provide reasonable assurance of that. So congratulations on earning that opinion again. Over on page thirty-seven.
Well, just as an FYI, I do call Robert the banker, so he does everything like a bank would, so he's sitting right there.
If you didn't hear me, I said we need to send you guys out to lunch or something because you guys are doing fantastic.
And then I heard you say, like, just make sure it's McDonald's.
On page thirty-seven contains the management's discussion and analysis. This section of the report contains some highlights, some comparative information to 2023, and some other information related to the different funds within the report. Now, if you'll turn with me to page fifty-seven. Page fifty-seven contains the balance sheet for the governmental funds. For this evening, I will just be touching on the general fund. At September thirtieth, 2024, City of Harlingen had total assets of two million one hundred and ninety-five thousand, total liabilities of two million nine hundred and forty-one thousand, and total deferred inflow of resources of one million one hundred and fifteen thousand, and an overall total fund balances of thirty-eight million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, of which thirty-six million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand is unassigned. The unassigned fund balance is what we call the rainy day fund. This can be used for anything that the city wishes to use it for. We recommend that you use it for one-shot items and not for anything that's gonna be ongoing, such as salaries or raises, things like that, because you will eventually deplete it. When I calculate the days of operation, I will refer back to this number. Two pages over, on page fifty-nine, is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, in the general fund, City of Harlingen for the year ended September thirtieth, 2024, had total revenues of sixty-two million one hundred and fifty-three thousand and total expenditures of sixty-two million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, and other financing sources of a million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for an overall net change in fund balance of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, if we take your total expenditures of the sixty-two million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, we divide that by three hundred and sixty-five, you get a hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. That is what, on average, it is costing for the city to open its doors each and every day. Now, if we take your unassigned fund balance of the thirty-six million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and we divide that by the hundred and seventy-two thousand, you get two hundred and twelve days of operations. That means that should the city not receive any more money from any sources, it would be able to operate for about two hundred and twelve days. That is very good. We normally recommend between sixty to ninety days, but you all are well over that, so congratulations on maintaining that healthy days of operations. And the last two items are towards the very back of the report, and the first one is on page three seventy-three, and that is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. Again, from our review and everything that we have tested, there were no findings, so congratulations on that. And the last item on page three seventy-seven is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program and internal controls in compliance with the Uniform Guidance and the Texas Grant Management Standards. This is what is otherwise known as the single audit. Again, City of Harlingen has earned an unmodified opinion, so congratulations on that again. This concludes my presentation. If you all have any questions?
I thank you so much for this. I really appreciate the overview.
Thank you.
It means a lot coming from your organization, who has a fantastic reputation, to say that our organization did a great job, so thank you so much. Another namesake would be very proud of you guys. The judge is a fantastic man, and so congratulations for all the work.
It's been an honor to continue that, and we intend to keep it going and provide the best service we can to our clients, so thank you all very much for that, and I appreciate the team here, so thank you and congratulations again.
And one other thing, specifically for Gabe. Gabe, you know, I had asked Robert last time he did the presentation for us to kind of show me how the fund balance is done. And, you know, based on when you started, you've actually helped us save ten million dollars since you came on as the city manager, so. And that's because last year, this year, we took a big hit because we had to pay off that big expense, right?
Three million.
So, yeah, so it's fantastic. Congratulations to the whole team, finance, city management. Thank you, guys. You guys have been doing awesome, everyone.
Yeah, I'd like to point out also that there's a section, the stat section, is really interesting to go through, so when you have a chance, just go through that. It provides a lot of good information about the city, the employees, the employment in the city, and past tax rates, which is important, and then it just got good information in.
Yeah, so I know we already thanked you at our audit committee meeting, but we'll just again reiterate everything that was said here. We appreciate your hard work, and we know that working with our team, we thank you for the praise then and now in terms of finance, and we appreciate it, and I think it's an honor to continue to work with you, and I share Daniel's sentiments about Judge Costco, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Next up, we have item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, there were no submissions, requests for public hearings.
Okay, so then we'll just take care of this. Item nine A, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of three point two-two acres of land out of Block one sixty-four in San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located along the south side of FM six seventy-five, approximately two thousand eight hundred and ninety point eighty-four feet southeast of FM five oh nine. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine A. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing. Nine B, public hearing for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at one nineteen West Van Buren Avenue, Suite seven, bearing a legal description of lots one, two, three, and four, Block sixty-nine, Harlingen original town site. Having no one here to speak for, or you are one to speak for? Because this is your item, right? Okay, you weren't signed up, but please come on up to, we'll open the public hearing at this time, and we have the applicant to share a few words. I'm assuming in support.
I feel like I'm walking into Shark Tank. I'd like a hundred thousand dollars and five percent equity. I would like, well, first of all, thank you for having me here today, and I would like your guys' approval to have me open the other room wine bar and coffee here in Harlingen. Are we bringing some business to the downtown area, hiring some employees, probably between five and ten employees? And I'm looking forward to opening the wine place. It's been a passion of mine for twenty, thirty years, and I want to bring the Alsace region here, I want to bring the Piedmont out of Italy, I want to bring Bordeaux, Burgundy, I want to bring Mexico, Chile, Argentina, California, Washington, Oregon, bring it all here to Harlingen, and have Harlingen enjoy some good wine, so thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Sounds fantastic.
We're super excited for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Having no one here else to speak for or against this item, we'll close the public hearing and move on. Ms. Melinda?
Item ten, action items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item ten A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of three point twenty-two acres of land out of Block one sixty-four, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located along the south side of Farm Road six seventy-five, approximately two thousand eight hundred and ninety point eighty-four feet southeast of Farm Road five oh nine. Applicant Emiliano Rosell, planning and development.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a three point two-two acre tract of land out of Block one sixty-four San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located along the north side of FM one oh six, approximately one thousand two hundred and ninety-five feet east of FM five oh nine, binding the land to all of the acts ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at one nineteen West Van Buren Avenue, Suite seven, bearing a legal description of lots one, two, three, and four, Block sixty-nine, Harlingen original town site. Applicant Gilberto Lucio, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Gilberto Lucio to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at one nineteen West Van Buren Avenue, Suite seven, bearing a legal description of lots one, two, three, and four, Block sixty-nine, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item ten C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for waiving a certain permit fees within the City of Harlingen caused by the recent state of emergency and amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh three, Buildings and Building Regulations, to add Section one oh three dash six, waiver of permit fees for rehabilitation during declared state of emergency. Planning and development.
An ordinance waiving certain permit fees within the City of Harlingen caused by the recent state of emergency and amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances at Chapter one oh three, Buildings and Building Regulations, to add Section one oh three six, waiver of permit fees for rehabilitation during declared state of emergency.
Was there any questions?
Motion approved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mark, for putting in that language in the discussion last night.
Item ten D, consideration and possible action to authorize the Development Corporation of Harlingen, Inc., to award a contract to H two O Construction Services, Inc., for the Park at Roosevelt Phase Two roadway entrance project.
Motion approved.
H E D C.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good job on coming in under budget, man. Sorry, if you want to comment on that, good job.
Item ten E, consideration and possible action to approve the allocation of one additional paid vacation day for all eligible municipal employees.
Motion approved.
Second.
Just one question. Who's the eligible employees that they're looking at?
Everybody that's full-time and that has been here more than ninety days.
I wanted to make sure that everybody got paid. They didn't have, if they weren't able to get here to work because they were flooded in their homes, then they shouldn't be penalized. So everybody is going to be paid.
So this is just a one-time?
Yes, one-time allocation just for this.
Yeah, and so since it was, I guess, I don't know what the pay period was, and so they were covered with, you have to use a vacation day, we want to give them back that vacation day. And so the incentive would be the few that were able to come get an extra vacation day.
And I think, just as an FYI, Mayor, I think everybody had enough days so that everybody got paid. I don't think we had any that didn't get paid because they didn't have enough days.
Well, let's make sure that that's the case and make everyone whole.
No, yeah, we will. HR would have let me know if somebody was gonna get paid.
Yeah, I figured, I told them the commission is gonna support it a hundred percent. But, yeah.
They gotta do something fun with that vacation day. Turn off your city phone, do something fun.
All right, so.
Mayor, I just want to thank the mayor and commission for doing this for the employees. I think it's just, it's the right thing to do, and there's something in the policy that allowed me to do that, so thank you for doing this.
Absolutely. You know, I think that we saw the spirit of Harlingen with all of those employees that worked crazy hours, and everyone did their part from all different departments, and I'm confident that the ones that could get here got here, and the ones that couldn't really, really couldn't. And so we need to make sure that we're taking care of our people. All right, so we had a motion and a second?
Yes.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item eleven, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or by laws.
I'd like to reappoint Trey Peacock to Economic Development Corporation Board. None.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Trey Peacock to EDC. Trey Peacock, reappointed EDC.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, he's already there. And then I don't have any, none?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Reappoint Delia Gomez for the Library Advisory Board, and have Steve Ritter for Utilities Board of Trustees.
And do you have any?
Yes, I want to reappoint Eric Sepulveda to the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board.
And do we have everybody's, well, just Mr. Ritter's board appointment application?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, he's.
I haven't seen none.
I don't have it.
We don't have it.
Isn't he already on the board?
He's already on the board. He's on the Veterans Advisory Board.
So is that what we're gonna do? I don't have a problem with that, I'm asking. I don't know. We were gonna work on an omnibus.
I'm working, I'm still.
So I think we just need to have a policy and whatever that, I'm sure he has a fine appointment, I don't think there's any issues.
If he's on the Veterans, if you need him removed from the Veterans Advisory Board?
No, no, sir, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we're to have the applications. These are all reappointments. Trey's on there, Delia's on there, Eric is on there. The only new appointment is Steve to a new board. I don't anticipate there being issues appointing him to the board, it's just, do we have the application? That's the policy. But if we are going to make an exception for those that are already on a board because they already have an application on file, I think that's fine, but is that the policy that we're having moving forward?
I think what we should do is, well, this one is fine because he's already on the board, but if in the future, Melinda, and for the rest of the commissioners, just have them resubmit it so that we can just see.
So you need a different application for every position?
That's the way we've done it.
Because you have the, you identify the board that you're gonna be on, and then what your qualifications are for that board. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve all the appointments, the reappointments and appointment of Mr. Ritter. Onto the.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just ask, moving forward, that we adopt that policy.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and.
Item twelve, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Item twelve A, pursuant to Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one and Section five five one point zero seven two, attorney consultation and contemplated litigation. Item 12B, deliberation regarding real estate and Section 551.087, economic development relating to the following projects, Project Beach, Project Organic, Project Casa Grande.
All right, is there a motion to go in executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It is now 6:45 p.m. and we will retire to executive session and be out shortly. Time is now 8:46 p.m. and we are back in open session. Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A and B as discussed in executive session.
Make motion to approve, sorry. A motion to proceed forward is discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's it, adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Wait, wait a minute. Did you vote on all three?
Yes.